Good evening, welcome to the Winthrop School Committee Monday, July 24, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the E.B. Newton Lyceum Room. Ms. Haynes, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vecchia?
Present.
Mr. Capri Bianco?
Present.
Dr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Holden?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes. This meeting will be recorded and may be televised live. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions?
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda, we have delegates and visitors, which I believe we have none. Is that correct Superintendent Howard?
That is correct.
Nothing tonight? We didn't have any correspondence this week. Is there any public comments? Kate, nothing? The minutes for July 10, 2017 were in our packet for review. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Vecchia, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Capri Bianco, is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? And, okay, that's good. Next up, we have the warrant. We have warrant SVW18-2 in the amount of $138,451.89. Is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Callis, is there any discussion on the warrant? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next up, Ms. Perrin. Okay. Next up, we have a payroll warrant SPW17-28 in the amount of $128,871.63. I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vecchia, any discussion on the payroll warrant? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Budget transfers? Do we have budget transfers in our packet?
Is that for two?
Sorry, they're probably right here. They're gonna be after this. Yeah. Right here.
I think that one?
Transfer of the William P. Gorman Fort Banks licenses, building blocks, for curriculum?
Yes.
Licenses and stipends to increase for $258 at the Fort Banks, taken from student materials, $258. And then increasing the computer technicians by $90,000, taken from IT support. These are just end-of-year transfers?
No.
Oh, no, this is this year.
Yes.
This is 2017. Yep. Do you want to talk about what that IT support?
Well, when they are part of retrofit, if they don't work for retrofit anymore, they work strictly for us.
Right.
And, yeah, it's the two salaries. We had moved all those salaries into the IT support line.
Yep.
I'm moving them back into the technician line.
So those two employees are school department employees?
Correct.
Currently, which is different from last year. And that's an improvement, I would say.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Some other professional development monies and textbook money being moved around. Do people have any questions about that?
Just one, like the math book and reading textbooks, do we touch base with the principals, the teachers?
Yes.
Or do they recommend or suggest it?
This was actually from Mr. Harity. He ordered his Storytime and Go Math. They come in at less money. He left money in that line in case students come in and need more books, but he moved some of it over to technology for Chromebooks, and he also put some money into professional development to cover for things.
Is there a motion made already Patty? I know. I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Callis, is there any more discussion on the budget transfers?
Just one more quick one, on the middle school utilities decrease, is that a savings or?
On the FY-
Utilities, gas, middle school.
Oh, that's a separate transfer.
That's a second.
There's two separate transfers.
Okay.
That's the FY17. We were just talking about FY8.
So do you want to take them separately then?
It's up to you, it doesn't-
Well, why don't we take them all together?
Okay.
So I'll amend my motion to take all the budget transfers together.
So, sorry Bill, what was it?
Oh, so did that count to be a savings that we realized?
Yeah, it kind of fluctuates every year.
Right.
You never really know what it's gonna come in.
Well, weather.
It came in at less than-
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the budget transfers? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you.
Can I just bring up one other thing?
Yes.
Transfers on the FY17, on the last paragraph, I add, these are the bulk of the transfers, but I'm still working on encumbrances and stuff, so I'm still gonna have a few transfers to do. However, I need to have them done before the next meeting, so in the memo, I had asked for permission to be able to do those, but I'll still bring them to the next meeting so you can vote them. It's just to finish cleaning up, and I can't, we have to close before the 14th of August.
Right.
So I don't have time to, and I'm still working on each line, so I'll still have a few to-
Can we do that, Ms. Perrin, do you know, without a vote, to allow Ms. Eccles to clean up the line items for last year's budget? Or do we need to hold a special meeting with a quorum to vote on that?
Hmm, so you're asking for permission to put together budget transfers?
These are the bulk of the transfers I have to do, but I'm still working-
Working on closing out last?
Correct.
I think we could do it at the next meeting.
I think the date does not work for her.
I have to be done by this week.
Then we just have a special meeting?
Which will have to be-
This time?
I'm not gonna-
Whatever day works.
What date is it required by?
We need to see the posting time.
The end of July?
I have to, I had told Biz that I would try and get everything done by the end of this week as best as I could, but I don't know. Is it possible to, can I give them a date to call?
One of-
Try to think. The only thing is you just have to have, it has to be posted?
Yeah, it has to be posted.
Tomorrow to have a meeting on Thursday.
So the 31st is Monday. A week from today is the 31st.
Seven thirty?
Yeah, 31st.
Because then I have to do the entries too, so. I think you-
It's not unusual that we have like a three-minute meeting in the summer to do a cleanup vote, so I don't mind doing that if people don't mind coming in for a quick approval. We've done it, yes.
I'll be away, is there anywhere I could sign it when I return the next day? Or do I have to be?
Yeah, we just need to have a quorum for the vote, so we can get four of us to agree to be here on a certain date, that probably would be better.
Friday morning, okay?
So why don't we set it for Monday?
Or Monday morning?
Friday morning doesn't work for me, Monday maybe.
Monday, I believe she's looking for Monday, that Susan's looking for Monday.
Would you need to have it in the morning, not at six?
I prefer it.
Prefer it?
Definitely.
And you probably can't do it in the morning.
I'll work around it, I'll take time off if I have to.
Like 8:00 AM morning or 8:30?
That's before work, that'd work for me.
Okay, so Mr. Vecchia?
Yes.
The 31st, 8:30 AM? Does that, just to be sure, we have a quorum, I mean with just Mr. Perrin, myself, Mr. Holden, and Dr. Callis, we have a quorum, but it would be great to make sure.
One sec.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, so Patty, why don't you post 8:30, Monday, July 31st?
Can we do eight?
Can we do eight?
Yeah.
Can we do eight? Okay.
Eight would be better, so.
Okay.
All right.
I'll find a room, I'll see if I have any.
And if we need to cancel, we could even do it in your office, you know, and if that, we need to cancel, we need to cancel, but at least we have time to post.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Do you think that's all right Susan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks for working that out, everyone. Warrant, subcommittee transfers, buildings and grounds, we don't have any buildings and grounds approvals tonight, correct?
No, not at this time.
Curriculum, there's nothing on the curriculum, but we'll talk next about the curriculum subcommittee we had today, if you're prepared for that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll go right into that. We had a curriculum subcommittee this morning led by Dr. Callis.
So I was there, Chief Person Sullivan was there, and Mr. Holden was there, and Superintendent Howard, Mr. Crombie, Mr. Harity, and Mr. Curley were also there. We talked about curriculum oversight and the need for staffing to support the implementation and alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment, along with a person who would be able to network with other districts, such as the five district partnership and other outside of school meetings. We're looking, we would, we're still needing staffing for someone who would support teachers in looking at data and monitoring the impact of curriculum instruction, and there's also a need for a grant writer. So this meeting was to open the conversation about what the position or what the structure of several positions would ultimately look like, like our endgame goal, recognizing that we may need to build out this organization over several years. There were several ideas that were shared, one that we talked about was a tiered structure with a Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment/Grant Writer, who would be overseeing the school-based, we called them associate directors, who might have a halftime teaching load at each building, or for a grade band, say K5 or N6 through 12. This role would also be, the overall director would also be responsible for moving plans forward on the integration of technology into instruction, or that might be a separate site-based staff person who was in charge of technology generally. But we're still in discussion about that, and Superintendent Howard is going to pull together job descriptions and organizational charts from districts that she knows are doing well with student performance and have curriculum directors making that happen, identify corresponding salary bands for those different positions, and possibly the resumes of staff in such positions so that we can understand the market, and identify the themes and the points that principals feel would be needed in this position or these positions that they're gonna be listing, and then further examine our budget to see if there are resources that could be reallocated for this year to start making steps towards building out our curriculum and assessment staffing. She's gonna report out to us on the August 14th whole school committee meeting, and then we're gonna decide if we need to go back to the subcommittee meeting. And we had some finer points that we're talking about, if the site-based position is reported to the grant writer, would a grant writer need to have expertise in curriculum and instruction? We talked about whether the fact that the grant writer would need to be savvy about education to be able to write successful grants, particularly federal grants. But we also talked about maybe we can find a, for right now, a retired educational grant writer to begin working with us part-time. And if we do have site-based positions, then we would need to free up time in teacher's schedule and not just have a full course load for these folks with the stipends, and also the idea that these site-based positions could build paths for growth for our staff. But then there was also discussion that these positions would need to have authority, because while they might not be formally evaluating teachers, they're directing teachers in order to improve implementation of curriculum. So we're still looking at different organizational structures of whether it should be more administrative or teaching staff. And those were the main topics that we talked about, but it's an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, I thought it was a nice conversation, there were some creative ideas bounced around. I think we were trying to figure out how to delegate lots of valuable tasks with the loss of our curriculum director for this upcoming school year, so I'm happy with the discussion we had today, and that there will be more of it.
Sure enough, I think it's important to note, we talked a lot about defining the position, defining what that would look like, the accountability piece around that, the integration of technology to a degree underneath the positional positions, and being in that early planning stage of doing something that would support a lot of different areas but be very well-defined, so that result-driven, and the ability for us to report that back out to the committee as well as our own staff members, in terms of the effectiveness of a plan such as that. And again, having sort of a long-term goal to build the program out to support all areas of curriculum, and not just one or two or groups of grade levels, but be pretty specific in terms of the outcomes that would be expected in the accountability piece. That was a very productive meeting.
It was productive. With that, Superintendent, would you like to go right into the superintendent's report tonight?
Please, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity, thankfully, as it was approved by the school committee, to attend the MAS superintendent's conference and enter into the new superintendent induction program. It is a system of coaching new superintendents in the Commonwealth and providing new superintendents with lots of support around leadership, legal advice, having other folks to lean on and bounce some ideas off of, as well as looking at curriculum and new trends in education, things that are working, things that may need some tweaking. The idea behind it is to continue this process, which I began early on, of interviewing staff members, collecting documentation, and beginning to look at common trends that folks are finding are important to the district, and then be able to come back to the team, to the school committee as a whole, and provide a deeper understanding of the key district strengths that we've identified, areas for our development, context in how things are working within the district, and the relationship of those items to the instructional core and the values of the school system. I have the pleasure of having Dr. Erwin Blummer assigned to me as a coach, he's a Boston College graduate, he is a program, was a program leader up until a few years ago in the doctoral program in educational leadership at Boston College. He's a well-known superintendent, past superintendent, retired superintendent of schools, who's a very reflective and thoughtful educator. And his goal is not to be a mentor to me, which is a little bit different than being a coach. So his goal is to push my limits, to get me to question the regularities of how things have been done, and to really sort of dig down deep and analyze things within the school system, and then be able to come up with a thoughtful entry-finding plan for the committee and report those results to you formally during a school committee review. Developing the district's strategy to ensure that this, you know, the school committee is, you know, approving of that, aligned systems, monitoring action plan and the implementation of that plan, helping to do that as well, all leaning towards progressive, towards the district's vision, which is something that along the track I will help develop with the committee as well as the administrators and teachers in the system. It is a valuable resource. I have a tendency to have a limited attention span, and I spent four days in this conference, and every minute spent got me excited about the next day, which means kind of says a lot, so that continues. We talked a little bit tonight about a transfer for technology, taking funds from a technology line item and moving them over to fund the two positions that were in the technology line item before for retrofit. I will be meeting with Geo and, Geo and?
Petro.
Petro. I've met with them twice already, so I shouldn't remember their names, but to do some work around identifying their role, their job description, working with the principals and the teachers on how to utilize them in the most efficient way, as opposed to pulling them in the classroom as they're walking through the hallway, albeit a tempt, you know, something that is tempting to people, and having them at this point report back to me. I think it's important to know who they are accountable to, and at this point, it will be me, so they'll meet with me monthly to talk about our needs. What to report on that? Retreat, I'm having a retreat with the leadership team to talk about our plans for professional development, beginning stages of the school year, and we will have the ETLs, the assistant principals, and some other administrators in the system. And that, working around people's vacation schedules, so I'm hoping to have the dates for those, and I will let you know what the agenda is for those meetings, so if there's anything that you would like to see added to those, I'll have it approved.
Okay, great.
As far as superintendent's report, that would be it for me.
Any questions for Superintendent Howard tonight? Thank you, and thank you for working out that IT situation.
Sure.
If you want to go right to personnel?
Personnel, so we have, continue to work on filling our appointments and openings. His principals have been excellent, with sticking with our strategic plan in terms of hiring for whether we leave an absence or replacement. Mr. Mosero had met with the leadership team prior to his departing Winthrop, and I had the opportunity to review that with him, and with each one of the principals, there's been a little bit of flexibility in terms of certain positions, but all staying within the total amount budgeted per building, and our principals have been excellent with that. And we had one resignation of a math teacher at Winthrop High School. At this point, we have no retirements in terms of postings, we have a kitchen worker posted for the William P. Gorman School, substitute kitchen worker for all schools, an office aide for the William P. Gorman, and a math teacher for Winthrop High School, and a long-term substitute history teacher for Winthrop High School. And at this point, I have a new leave of absence scheduled.
Just had a question about the history posting, I saw it said the 21st, are they still taking applications?
It says the 21st, I'm sure, I can check with Matt, but I'm sure if the position has not been filled, we'll be reposting it and can cancel me to accept applications.
If you do know, what level math?
Math, I believe, is 11th?
I mean algebra, geometry, what, like?
I'm not 100%.
That's fine.
I can get back to you on it, I can check with Matt.
Thank you, if you can send that up, me too, thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. And there was some question about human resources, are we finding the process of the resignations and the appointments working okay with the amount of human resources hours we have allocated to us?
We have, and I, you know, have had the opportunity to learn how that works in the Winthrop Public Schools, it's a little bit different than what I have been used to, so it's somewhat of a learning curve for me. I'm probably the person that's causing issues in terms of continuity right now of how we do things, but Stacy and I have met together and talked about, different superintendents have different styles in terms of hiring staff and what they like to do. I like to meet with each staff member alone and have a conversation with them about myself and about them, and sort of how they see themselves fitting into our, into our school district. So my meetings are a little bit longer, but I feel as though that personal connection with folks as they come through the door allow them to feel comfortable in asking questions. And Stacy has been great in just sort of sticking around for the next half hour, and then I send them down to her, making sure everything is complete. We've done a little bit of work in the central office in time, making sure all documents are in and ready to go before we get to payroll, so there's really no look in that record, so it's been working out so far.
Our previous superintendent had wanted to add some human resources hours, and we changed that idea, so I just was wondering how it was going so far.
As of right now, and I'm hoping that less turnover and more teacher retention will allow us not to have to utilize that system very often, so so far so good.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't see the need for addition as a requirement.
Great, thank you, just keep us posted about how that's working. Under new business, we have review of policies. We had an opportunity to review a policy of the school committee, and upon doing so, Superintendent Howard and myself actually thought we had a great, you know, back-and-forth about how we should proceed with reviewing school committee policies in general, so it really led to a conversation about how we should go about, I guess number one, being sure that not only personnel are aware of what policies exist, but also the school committee is aware of what policies exist. And in my term here on the school committee, it has seemed that policies come up as a reaction to an incident, and sometimes we have a policy that was in place, and sometimes we have a policy that needs to be updated. And so Superintendent Howard and I have discussed having a policy subcommittee on a more regular basis to review, you know, maybe three to five of the most priority policies that affect our students, our personnel, and the school community as a whole. And so whether that just looks at reviewing the policies and say, oh, that totally makes sense, you know, everybody already knows about that, or wow, this is one that we haven't thought of in 20 years, so this could use some updating. So our plan moving forward to be, would be to, I asked Superintendent Howard to identify, you know, maybe five of the most important priorities of policies, and if anyone on the school committee has ideas about that as well, I'd love to hear them, so that we could get started in kind of a overall policy review. Mr. Perrin?
I think we need to come up with like a tickle calendar, so that-
You had mentioned that, yeah.
So that every time one of these policies comes up for a certain date of review, to make sure it still complies with the law, that we're there looking at it and updating it. Because a lot of times when you go through that policy book, some of these policies are from the 70s and the 80s with no real changes or updates to them, and then, like you said, it's more reactionary than planning, so maybe, you know, at some point, get an outlook calendar and put in there-
Well, for sure, it's a long-term process, and in the background, where I come from is when policies are approved and put into the system, you know, everyone that's on the board at the time kind of signs off on them, and it, you know, I know Ms. Haynes has, does a good job of putting the updated date on them all, but just so we know when the most, what the most current policy is. And that our policies are functional, you know, it doesn't mean anything if they're in a binder on a shelf, you know, that we're using these policies to guide how we're teaching our students, how we're interacting with the community, how we're providing information to parents, to staff, to anyone, so it's an opportunity to look at our process, and it's not something that's gonna be finished in the next couple of weeks, but putting it on a calendar and going in some systematic way of priority would be, I think, is a good plan.
I really think we have to make sure that what the policies state is what we practice, or that the policies track what our practices are.
Right.
You know, because I think a lot of it is lost, exactly.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I think a plan, a good plan for that is identifying, and sometimes the Department of Education allows us to highlight some of those changes in policy, and if you follow the track of any changes, whether it be school discipline law, whether it be-
What just happened with the wellness policy?
Yeah, wellness, yeah, wellness, or whether it happens to be restraint. I follow those pretty closely, so I can highlight some of those, but if there is a policy subcommittee that meets fairly regularly, and certain items are reviewed, the feedback from the policy subcommittee may just be a copy of each one of those with something on that says reviewed or suggested changes, then each committee member would have the opportunity to review those as well as part of their packet. I think that when we do our early school year meetings with the staff, and we review such items as the school's restraint policy, as well as internet policy and the like, that many of those are done in our beginning of the school year meeting and signed off on, because that's what the policy asks us to do.
Right.
You know, so a lot of the civil rights data that we have to keep track of has us do that. So we do review and have staff review some policy, but not all. If you've seen the policy book, dusted off, it's, you know, it's pretty thick, and combining some of those policies has been the way some other school districts have gone, and again, it's a lot of work, but it's a condensing down of the policy book, so it's not so overwhelming. And so I will, I will get a copy of sort of the hot topic items from the Department of Education to sort of get us off the ground and running, and present that to the committee so that the subcommittee can maybe start with that particular group, and then we can keep track in our system of what has been reviewed, what the date updated is, and just do more than one at a time.
Exactly.
And do a few.
Yeah.
And some of them are very short, so it's pretty easy to do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, is there any questions or ideas about that? Thank you. We have nothing under unfinished business? We are back to-
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know the update on the transportation bid.
Oh, sure, sorry, I'm sorry that wasn't on.
That's all right, I just got this from Monica today. She's gonna advertise it in, it's, I guess it's called Goods and Services, it must be, on July 31st, and then the transcript on the 27th, and then the bids will be due in to her on the 21st of August.
Okay.
That would be kind of tight, I think, for this coming year to-
To make a change?
Yeah.
I think we should still proceed.
Oh, yeah.
I think we should too.
Just to get an idea of where we're at.
Do you know the history of the transportation bid and how that sort of came about?
I do, I followed it prior to taking the position. So, you know, in terms of contracted agencies other than the buses that we have of our own, I think we're in a unique position that if we were to- I think we're in a unique position that if we were to receive a bid that folks felt that that was, after vetting through the process, that that was the best way to go. And I'm, I'm not so sure we would be denied the right to enter into an agreement partway through the school year. It would be, you know, certainly we'd have to discuss whether or not that's, how disruptive that would be to our students, how efficient it would be, how effective it would be. That would all be vetted out through the subcommittees and committee. But I, I don't think any time is too late. You know, you, ideally you'd like to have your contract done in June for the following year, but I, I don't know that anyone would want to turn us away if we asked to come in. If there's such a good deal out there that, you know, you couldn't turn it down. You could, you could enter into a contract with some plan, thoughtful planning for parents and whatnot.
Some of the challenges we've had in the past is because our district is so small, if, if we did have a sick call of a bus driver, if we did have a breakdown of a bus, parents were often getting called, you know, fifteen minutes, a half an hour before the bus was supposed to arrive. And so we, there was some thought, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we had a contract, that there would be less of that, sort of things popping up that a small district like ourselves couldn't manage within ourselves. So, and then, of course, we wanted to look at the, the dollar-for-dollar comparison.
I think it's really important to see, because everybody's questioning them. I think we need to really see.
Yep, so we need to just see it.
And sort of the long-term plan for the vehicles that we have and doing across walk.
Right.
And some good work around long-term planning for exactly what we have in terms of maintenance, in terms of longevity of the vehicle. And so I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're looking at sort of every angle. Sometimes you're surprised at what you find when, when you end up getting it out completely.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes?
Susan, at some point, could you just send us a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? We did, about a year ago, maybe a little bit more than a year ago, consolidate the transportation subcommittee with the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. So that situation now kind of falls under the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. So we don't have a separate transportation subcommittee anymore.
So we'll see what those bids look like. You may want to do that. You may want to-
It made sense at the time, but anyhow, okay. Anything else? Public comments? Public relations? Mr. Beck, do you have any public relations tonight?
Nope.
Mr. Capiano?
Nope.
Mr. Holden?
All set, thank you.
Dr. Callis?
No, thank you. I will say that I, they're opening up the middle, the old middle school gym on Friday nights, I think from six to nine, for middle school students to have some recreation. And don't forget about the summer reading list that I think are posted on the school websites for each building. And if you have any questions, the principals are in the buildings for the summer, so you can certainly reach out to principals if you have questions about summer work or summer reading. Anything, Ms. Perrin? Any last public relations, Superintendent? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Show moves.
By Mr. Capiano, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.